Well, since it's 6:30, I'd like to call the meeting to order. The first order of business is adoption of remote participation. Could I have a motion to that effect?
So moved as written.
Second.
Thank you very much. Let's do a roll call alphabetically by town. Pam Nurse Acton, yes. Michael, you're muted.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Will Do Conquer, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Judy Cocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice to Lucas Joe, yes.
Welcome, everyone. And I'd like to, you know, extend a welcome to everyone who is on the call. Under Chair's report, I have just a couple of things. First of all, for school committee members over, you know, the next few weeks, by next meeting, we want to put together our subcommittees. So I will be in touch with you about what committees that you are interested in serving on in the coming year. So, you know, please be thinking about that. The other thing, because just there are so many things that are changing and so much that's going on right now, I think we should count on having a school committee meeting twice a month going into the fall. So, you know, do expect to be having, you know, two meetings in September and so on through the fall and at least until further notice. For people who are not members of the school committee, I want to encourage if you have questions to put them in the chat. If we're not able to address them tonight, I do know that the superintendent is planning on holding a town meeting for parents in the very near future. Does anyone else have anything else for the good of the committee?
Jeff?
Just a shout out to the Minuteman staff and faculty. Being both a school committee member here and a teacher in Newton, I have a really good idea of what you're going through and what you have to do to put together the plan and to adapt to it and to live with the level of uncertainty that we're all living with. So I just wanted to mention this and to acknowledge the challenge that you're facing and you're dealing with every day now and for the foreseeable future, and it is greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much, Jeff. I actually had meant to start with that. So I am so happy that you jumped in. I'm actually babysitting, so just as a warning, you may see a little child running through now and then, but thank you for mentioning that. Anyone else? Okay, why don't we move on to the superintendent's report?
I'm going to be sharing an updated version of the presentation I gave last week and then updated again from the presentation I gave the teachers yesterday. Can you see this? Yeah?
Yeah, we currently see your presentation view. So it's not in, there you go. Now it's in slide view.
So this is a video that I sent you all the link to, so I won't go through it again, but it's about, it's just about, I want to spend a little bit more time this evening talking about some of the updates to the health information we've received and also some metrics that the state is proposing. You may have heard the governors address this afternoon, but prior to that, that the commissioner met with all the superintendents to give us a heads up. And we've incorporated that into our presentation so we could be aware of it. Just a reminder that the department has been working with health experts in the, through Mass General, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and they have been, on a daily basis, been consulted by the department as well as others in the administration in regards to the guidelines being released and promoted right now. And I just want to remind everyone that health and safety is our number one priority. We will not hesitate to switch if there's a notable increase of exposure in any of the metrics that are being discussed. We've got to adhere to state guidelines, consult with our local DPH, Departments of Public Health officials, and of course, with the school committee. The guidelines around our health and safety are on our website in the COVID information area. This, I'm just reminding folks, I presented this last week around the positivity rates by state, and you'll see that New York and New Jersey are all in the green, less than 5% positivity rates over the last seven days or so, well, over the last couple of weeks. And we looked at statewide what the positivity rates were. On average, it's about 1.8%. Some of the highest towns are listed there. The Minuteman towns in, that we serve and some of the larger non-member towns are all on the low end of positivity rates for towns. You can see, we included Lincoln here because that's where the school is mostly situated, and most of our towns are at 1% or below, very low rates, which is a good thing. Today, you may have heard the governor talk about another metric. You may have also heard the commissioner talk about it. He met with the MASC folks this afternoon. The metric they're talking about is using a daily, average daily case rate per 100,000. Obviously, this is developed as a result of testing, and you can see there are a few larger communities with red, which is, refers to more than eight cases per 100,000. And it's a rolling average, which I guess the governor and the commissioner said is going to be updated on a regular basis. We're assuming that means weekly or greater. And if you look at the color coding, what has been suggested is that this metric, along with others, be used to determine when school districts may move from one model to the next. Obviously, the red colored metric, which is a caseload of more than eight per 100,000, there's an expectation that a remote model would be implemented. Yellow is hybrid or remote, and green is listed here as full-time in person, which really reflects the goal of the department and the government to get as many kids in school full-time as, as the science and the data will allow. And the white unshaded is fewer than five cases over the last 14 days. Generally, it's small towns and, and communities that are just not seeing that kind of result. So when you look at the Minuteman district, you can see all of our towns are green or white, even including Watertown and Belmont, which are no longer member towns, as is Lincoln. So this is encouraging data. It's not data that we can rely on for the rest of the year. We've got to be consulting it on a regular basis, and we certainly will be. Other considerations that were outlined by the department, and they're encouraging us as districts to look at other metrics. You know, whether they're increasing or decreasing, positive testing, once we're able to access testing, that gives us information quickly, you know, within a few days. That'll be another metric we'll be able to utilize. They're going to be providing additional guidance, especially for schools like Minuteman that are regional schools. And when you look at the data, which we're going to look at from all of our member towns, we're going to see what that, I should say, all of our towns that are sending us students, we're going to be looking at that. We're not just looking at our member towns only. We can't do that, obviously. But they're going to be considering other metrics, including the metric that we've talked about, which is symptomatic rates. And obviously, multiple weeks of data is necessary to understand this. And then, obviously, regional schools have a, have a greater challenge in this. So just to remind folks, these are the healthy, health and safety protocols we've put in place that are in our plan. All students are masked, all staff are masked. I've been working with some staff today around some additional accommodations. And we were making those accommodations in as much as we can. We have two full-time nurses, as I mentioned before, an RN and our school nurse. We've established a second health office. We've established an internal tracking system that we're measuring the metric that we have identified as symptoms, symptoms being expressed by students during the day, but we'll include these other metrics mentioned today by the, by the commissioner. We did talk with some folks and lowered our symptom metric to 3% versus the 4%, which equates to, in the model that we're proposing, we're only 25% of the kids, or I should just say, one grade is in the school at a time. That could mean eight or nine kids. And that won't trigger the closing, but it'll trigger closing considerations along with the other metrics. And if you think about it, if we're looking at positivity rates, we're looking at rates by per 100,000, and we're looking at symptoms, that's three, you know, measures of data, which is a pretty solid grouping of data to make decisions on. Only visitors who are invited will be allowed into the school, and those that are invited will be filling out a form that Sarah is finalizing. Sarah is our school nurse. Transportation, again, 25 students per bus, per 77 passenger bus. Our little white buses will only be able to have seven kids on them. In the rare event they would be going off campus, or they might be going to a different part of campus. Masks are required on the bus, and they're provided by the drivers if needed. You know, we hope and parents will keep their kids home who are exhibiting any symptoms whatsoever. Windows on the bus will be opened, cleaning of the bus after the morning run and after the afternoon run. And the drivers in our new vendor, they go through a daily health screening process that their employer requires. We're cleaning the facility every day deeply. High-touch areas are disinfected through the day. We have the Minuteman Tactical Institute will be beginning September 14th with a much reduced capacity per program area, and it will be cleaned after the MTI programs are completed as well. We've purchased protective equipments, plexiglass shields, signage. We've reorganized furniture in classrooms, as you know. The recommendation is that you can be less than six foot apart from another person if you have a mask on. Installation of hand tiny, hand sanitizing stations have been throughout the building will continue. We're also going to be adding paper towel dispensers to all of our bathrooms and not using the, the air dryer, air blower systems that we have in place. There's signage being installed in the hallways, on the floors, to provide direction on where and how people need to move through the building in the limited times they're going to be moving through the building. Just to give you a sense of the parent feedback, we've been continuing to answer questions of families. We've had about 500 responses as of today. 93% of the responses support the hybrid model. Again, 78% were comfortable with the full in-person model, but still a significantly lower number, and that's pretty understandable. 75% of our member district parents have said they'll use the bus to transport their student to and from Minuteman. And there are about 5% of the parents who've responded, about 25 to 30 kids, who have asked us to provide them a remote learning option, a full remote learning option, and we are prepared to do that. We surveyed our teachers. The administrator, administration surveyed the teachers. We had about an 89% response rate. We had a meeting last, yesterday. I think there were about 86, 87 staff on that meeting. There were 47 comments, the majority expressing an eagerness to come back to school. There were comments about safety and health, questions about safeguards, especially from individuals who I've encouraged to reach out to me, which they have, who are seeking some additional accommodations, and we're, you know, in the process of assessing those accommodations. And if we're able to provide them, most of them will be able to provide. And we're seeking additional information in some of the requests that have been made. One of the big concerns that came up in the survey of our staff is childcare. We have a lot of families, as most school districts do, a lot of teachers who have kids in schools and other districts. The commissioner has, has said he anticipates sending out a, some guidance around asking superintendents to allow the children of teachers to have a full in-person model available to those parents who teach in another school district. And I reached out to Dan Gudekand's, actually from Needham, one of our member towns, who's been spearheading a, a pretty proactive process to get other superintendents to commit to this now, you know, without having to have an edict or a directive. But, and he's indicated to me that he's had a, a lot of positive response. We're hoping that guidance around this comes out next week, early next week, so that we can allay the concerns of families that have kids, who are, and those families, our teachers have families who live in districts that have gone either all remote or some hybrid model. In addition, we're looking at a potential accommodation here at Minuteman in, for, for kids of teachers who are in the elementary school age group, and they're in a full remote learning district where they reside. And what would we be able to provide here that would allow their children to come to school with them here and work on their remote learning assignments here? I'm hoping we don't have to, to do that. There's a lot of complications with that. There's a lot of issues with that that I've talked to our attorneys about. I tried to get this commissioner to answer some questions directly about that in our meeting, but it's still to be determined. But we hear the concerns. We certainly share them. It has great implications for our able, being able to have a full staff to manage the hybrid model or the remote or someday full in-person again. Just to remind, this is what the department asked us to do, come up to develop three reopening models, in-person, hybrid, and remote. And that's what we've done. Our full in-person model was the most difficult and expensive to implement with the additional buses, additional staffing, classroom modifications. We had more students coming than the building was designed for. I'll never get tired of saying that. Never. We're looking at the cost of renovating the former Tremont School at the east end of campus to accommodate classrooms, if that would be necessary. We're actually cleaning the building out now. We're doing some minor work to equip it with internet infrastructure over there. But physical distance, we would, if we were forced to go into an in-person model, we would have to use that building at this point in time. And you may know, many districts have looked at modular classrooms and other sorts of, you know, kids going to school at the Boys and Girls Club or at the YMCA. It was more than a million dollars of additional costs. The hybrid model too, which I've talked about and has changed a little bit over the last few, over the last week, is that only one grade would be in the building at a time, average 25% capacity. All staff will be in the building every day. Students would be focused on the CTE instruction, and those students that need more individualized instruction, support services that may be on their IEP, we would have them come into school more often on a schedule. All academics and electives would be taught remotely, as well as related academics to CTE. It's really the best model for us to kind of maintain what we're known for, which is high-quality CTE and rigorous and relevant academics. If we went to another model, even the, for the other hybrid learning model that we were looking at before, we would have to strip away so many of our electives and levels, like there wouldn't be, you know, AP classes or even college-level academics. There'd be, all kids would be in that groupings. So the full remote model, which we're prepared to go to, is obviously, you all know what that is. It may be necessary to implement if our metrics are pointing that way, or the, or the governor, the commissioner move us in that direction. As I mentioned, about 5% of kids' families are opting for a full remote, regardless of what we do. So, and we're accommodating that as well. Our report is, is going to have some minor updates to it based upon the information we received today, but it's still at that link. So I don't know if anybody has any questions on what I've presented so far that I need to review. Dave?
Yeah, so I, I, first of all, you know, I applaud everybody for the, the challenge and efforts. In a remote learning environment, has MAVA considered the opportunity of possibly combining like courses in a remote format for vocational across the board to kind of lighten the load?
Well, I can, that's a great question. MAVA is the Mass Association of Vocational Administrators, and I can tell you, Dave, I don't know if I've mentioned it before, but when we first left and went into remote learning in March, a few superintendents, we got together and got all of our carpentry teachers, all of our culinary arts teachers, all of our engineering teachers together remotely to come up with common resources and best practices in providing online and remote learning. And that's really ramped up over the summer, and we've sort of, we've been supporting that. So it's happening to a degree that we're all very proud of, and a lot of teachers have, in my school, in our school, have participated in that, as well as some regional and national things, like Katie, who's a, is our director of CTE, is working on a national assessment to help with early education and care students, understanding what their competency levels are, and then assisting in getting programming to them. So we're really proud in this state of, and I'm actually going to be on a podcast, a national podcast tomorrow, and I'm going to be talking about that.
And I also see possibly for those people who would like AP or advanced English and math, looking at, at some type of partnership with Middlesex in, in trying to, to align those programs where we, as a school, would, would offset the tuition cost or negotiate a tuition cost to allow those students to attend the, the AP or advanced classes at Middlesex for their remote classes and, and provide that, that, you know, community lever, so to speak.
Yeah, we've done that in the past with students who've asked for more advanced language classes, for instance. We do have, I think, seven dual enrollment classes now that, when a student takes the class here, they are getting credit at Middlesex College. I don't know, is it, and we're going to, because of this hybrid model, we're going to be able to continue to offer those. If we went to the half-day, every-day, week on, week off, we wouldn't be able to do that.
Yeah, I totally get that. I'm just, I'm looking at, again, because we're not the only school that's struggling like this, right? And it's, it's a way for, sometimes the community working as a whole can leverage where there is additional resources and/or commonalities and, and try and stitch together something that's, that's never been done before.
Absolutely.
I applaud the effort. I, I, again, I like the innovation. Thanks for the update.
Other questions so far? Judy?
I'd just like to echo everyone else's sentiments saying thank you. This is such a huge lift, and I think it's, hasn't felt like summer for a lot of people, unfortunately, because of everything going on. Thank you for dropping the symptomatic rate from 4% to 3. That makes me very much more comfortable. Thank you. And really, kudos for getting 500 parents to complete the survey. That's quite a feather in your cap. I noticed with the staff survey, and again, 89% is great, absolutely phenomenal return too. Did they have any opinion or preference on how they would have liked to return to school?
Oh, Mike, I'm not muted. There was a large support for the remote, you know, the combination hybrid model. It, it sort of depends what perspective they come from. You know, we have a school with CTE teachers, academic teachers, special ed teachers. They, I would say they all had a varying perspectives, but I believe after our meeting last night, we answered a lot of questions. I think the comfort level with the hybrid model was, was there. And I think also, the, the big thing we heard about was childcare. And then, you know, a few staff that have some underlying things that we need to deal with.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff?
I move that the school committee approves the Minuteman Fall Learning Plan as presented.
Second.
Okay, um, we have a motion in a second. Let's move on to discussion. Alice?
Alice, you're on mute.
Are we supposed to ask all our questions now, or is there more presentation coming? Is that, that's it?
Yeah, with all the new information we have, we have the school calendar, which is a separate vote.
Okay, so I listened to the commissioner today. I'll, I'll second everybody's comments about how hard this is to do. I just, it's mind-boggling, a tremendous amount of work, but I do have a couple more questions. So the commissioner today talked about the definition of community and I, when they're, when they're, you know, moving from one model to another. So like what Dr. Boquellen was saying about including all of the towns, it's not just the member towns, but all of the towns where the kids come from and presumably where the staff come from, because they're also coming into the school. But he said that they would not be releasing their guidance on that until next week. So I just wonder, you know, if we have any sense as to where that guidance is going to be going, what direction is it going in? And then the other question I have relates to the, whether the state is going to be providing any kind of testing for rapid testing, or if anybody else is going to provide that. The, you know, there's this method of pool testing where they take a lot of samples together, say 10 samples together, and if it comes out negative, then that those people are in the clear, but if they do another 10 people, and if that turns up positive, then they test each sample individually to figure out who's positive in that group of 10, so it lessens the expense. And I just wondered what the status was on the testing, because the symptoms just, I just aren't making a great deal of sense to me as a method for determining whether someone is ill. I just aren't making a great deal of sense to me as a method for determining whether someone is ill.
Well, as I understand that. There's been no information about. Increased levels of testing. For what I consider frontline staff, and that's teachers. It's been asked, it's been alluded to. But I've seen nothing come out yet. In regards to the, the. I don't know what the commissioner said at the MASC meeting. But it certainly seemed to me that the combination of the positivity rate. Being less than 5%. That the. And, you know, less than 2% or 1% in most of our communities, member communities. And this. Was it four or less, you know, the color coding? I think those were the two metrics that they're going to rely on and provide more guidance on. I think they were reluctant to do it today because. Of the governor's. Kind of pumping the brakes on. Part two of Phase Three. Where he went and limited the amount of people from 100 to 50, although in that order under Section Five, schools are exempted. So but if, you know, the commissioner wants all these things submitted Friday. And he hasn't extended the deadline for anyone. And I, whatever we submit is going to be subject to, you know. Changes that we all feel are are best.
He did say to the MASC, I'm sure some of the rest of the school committee was on that, I don't know, but. He did say that he seemed to leave the door open that there were going to be extensions of that Friday deadline. It it seemed that that Friday deadline wasn't a very hard deadline. That was my interpretation of what he said. Because he hadn't given any guidance on either regional districts or vocational districts or charter schools or Metcalf. It was like they had kind of. Not paid attention to that or something. I don't know why that he left those till last, but he hadn't addressed them. And he said they would have that guidance next week. So how he would ask all of those districts to produce something for a Friday deadline, but not give them guidance till next week. It wasn't really adding up.
Well, I don't think the guidance is going to impact our plan. It's just going to impact when we need to change from one model to the next. It's going to inform our. Shift from one model to the next. It's going to inform when we go from hybrid to remote, basically, is what's going to happen. I don't see us going to a full in person. Till next year, but.
Ed, is there a process for revising the plan that is submitted? If, for example. You know, there we we want to change, you know, some aspect of it, or there's a different, want to use a different metrics or. So. If the deadline is this Friday and say there is something that comes out in further guidance, what is our process for changing the plan?
We we control our own school district. Let's remember, you're in control of the school district. They are not. So we'll make our changes as we see fit best for us as the data and science tell us to. You know, we'd have a Zoom, quick Zoom meeting and make some changes. Bring everybody up to speed and and move forward.
And I assume you'll have a process for reaching out to parents and gathering input as well, so.
What I'm, what I'm reaching out to parents for more is what do they need? You know, we, we need to. Present them with a plan that fits. The vast majority of their needs, and it seems to me that we've done that with a 93% approve, you know, approval rating. I don't know how you're going to get that. I don't think Joe Biden's going to even get that now.
Other questions? Jeff?
I'm, I'm very. Pleased with the way that that the data. Is being used to. Help us in our decision making. And I give Governor Baker a little bit of credit on that for. Kind of giving that kind of thought process in Massachusetts. And of course, Ed. You've always been very good in following common sense data, and I appreciate that as well. The way that you are choosing this plan. Makes me. How do I say this? As comfortable as would be possible to be under the circumstances, acknowledging that there's risk in any plan that's coming out. No plan is going to be perfect. All plans are going to change. Based on the reality on the ground. And that's the way it is. And yet, despite all those uncertainties and concerns. I'm extremely happy. With the plan that you and your staff have created. I think there's a lot of common sense in it. I've seen Newton's plan as well, and they have a more complicated job because they have a lot more, you know, schools.
Absolutely.
So they have a more complicated plan, but I have to tell you, I'm really happy. With the plan for Minuteman, right? I think it's. Under the circumstances, I think it's terrific, a good starting point. And I'm. Comfortable voting, strongly comfortable voting yes for it, and I'm a little surprised about that.
Other questions or comments? I have Dave, then Judy.
Ed, can you guys talk a little bit about? If a parent or or student is determined to. Opt to to stay in a remote working or a remote learning environment and and. The transition mechanism for for parents in order to decide, you know. I'm just not comfortable today with sending Johnny to.
Yeah, well, the, the, the process is pretty straightforward. It's their. It's their right or their option. To. You know, request a full remote learning. Program. And the parents that I've. Emailed with and spoken to about that. Ones that have said, you know, I'm leaning. Towards keeping my kid in a remote environment. Can you tell me what the impact of that would be? Well, and certainly I go right to the CTE and hands-on learning is going to be. You know, suppressed or delayed. Or, you know, you can't sustain four years in a remote learning. CTE school. And then we talk about, well, so what would make you comfortable, you know? And a couple of parents, as they've read the report and or the proposal. I had one mom today email me and said, you know, I'm really leaning towards sending. My child to school. And it's a lot of more freshman parents. That are having questions and concerns, and we're trying to address them, but. You know, they're just, we've purchased some online resources with some other schools with Asabat, as a matter of fact. That's designed to to help freshmen look and explore careers. Remotely. We're also looking at some other curriculum that other states use. For that remote week when that student would have been in shop, but now they're remote on CTE. So some of those things can do some things. Obviously, in some programs, it's not a big deal. You know, web and programming design. Or even some aspects of engineering. Can be done remotely. And effectively for a for a period of time.
Yeah, no, my, I guess my concern is, is those. Those times in the fall where. A student may be developing our our standard. Flu-like symptoms and and start to develop. What we would can say, say atypical symptoms. And so we're encouraging those students to stay home. And so it's a, it's a CTE week and they're, they're, they're normally participating. But but you know what? So so how do, how do we assure that? You know, we want to encourage the right behavior without a penalty. Right? So if you're showing any symptoms whatsoever, protect yourself and your class, stay home.
Exactly, they have to. Or they'll be sent home.
Well, I, yeah, so can you talk a little bit about that? That that plan, I guess, and and how are we reassuring parents that, you know, the the absentee rule or or stuff we have in our handbook? Is is going to be completely fluid this year, because.
Well, there's several things to. To put context on the answer. One is that the commissioner. In ours, well, I should say. We have to track attendance. And absences from in-person learning and absences from remote learning. There's also been a statement around that. Snow days will count as. Teaching days, because the remote capacity of every school is going to is so high now. There were some, what do they call it? Blizzard bags? Remember, some schools were talking about blizzard bags? Well, every shop area from CTE, most of them have two teachers. And you, when you think about, they're only going to have one grade level in there at one time. There'll be a teacher for part of the day that will be assigned to work with kids who are learning remotely. That's going to happen every format. I was talking to some teachers today, and they've already been working on that. So even though there's going to be an in-person. Session, we know that there should have been kids in there too that are now remotely. So that second teacher is going to be. On a shop-to-shop basis, and maybe on a day-to-day basis, dealing with those kids who are home remotely. We're just not going to assume they're not engaged.
Yeah, thanks, Ed.
Thank you. Judy?
Okay, thank you. Just on the snow day question, I just assumed too that on snow days, you know, weather. Inclement days that the staff can teach from from their homes. It would be required to come.
They all have the capacity, most of them have the capacity to do that.
So they have that flexibility.
Yeah.
It was mentioned earlier, Pam mentioned that you were going to have a town meeting for the parents. Do you have a date for that yet?
No, I don't. I don't want to get ahead of the. The daily guidance. And we're finishing the scheduling this week. George and Diane and Amy and Katie have been working on the actual physical schedule, so I would like to have. The parents have the schedules in hand. When I have that meeting, so they can ask more specific questions. Also, the calendar itself that you're approving is sort of the base. Basic calendar you approve every year. And we have to kind of look at. When each class is going to be in and make sure they're balanced right. We're also looking at some changes in exploratory, obviously. But we want our students to get attached to their program area by Thanksgiving at the latest. So that may mean the freshmen come an extra. Week or two now before Thanksgiving. So there's a lot of details I want to work out before we have that. Session.
Okay. And and just lastly, just a comment, you mentioned that you don't. In a realistic world, don't expect the students to be back full-time in school until next year. Thank you for saying that, because it's kind of been whispered around corners. So it's just nice to hear someone. Really, you know, this is going beyond the first marking period in all probability. So thank you.
Okay, Alice?
Is it necessary to vote on this tonight, actually? Do you believe? I I just, I am still so conflicted. I like what you've done. I think it's gotten a lot tighter. I, there's been a lot of things that have improved. And I, but I. Feel like. You know, more time to think is. Can't be bad. Because. You know, ideas take time to develop and. If you waited another week. You're going to get whatever guidance he has about remote, you know, regional vocational, whatever. Of the school districts that have been left for last. So. I just, I just, we get more information as you go along. You get more information about the. The R rates, the. The what's happening in the counties, what's happening in other school districts, what's happening in. In Massachusetts. And as. As other states start to, you know, go back to school, you learn more too. I. I feel like there's. Still nothing, nothing clear to me about how. You get to the point where you say. Gee, these three metrics intersect in such a way that we have to go remote. And I I understand that there are several different metrics being looked at, but how do they? How do they come together for you?
Are you, are you, is for, I'm. I'm comfortable voting, and I'm asking the school committee to vote tonight. I don't have all the answers. But I know that we'll have the answers as we need them. And I think it's important for families and staff. To know that the plan we've talked about and worked on has been endorsed by the majority of the school committee. I don't know of any other vocational schools that are. You know, try thinking that they're going to get more information about the three models. Remember, we're, we're voting on a model. We're not voting on how we use data. The model that we've, we're working on, that we want to get finished in the details with is sound. You know, we followed all the guidelines. We've exceeded them in some cases. You know, parents are comfortable with the model. Staff are comfortable with the model. How all the decisions are made. About whether we go to remote and all that. I don't, you know, we can project a certain. We can see a trajectory. But how the state is going to. Interpret those is is. Is the guidance I think we're all. Expecting will evolve and be available to us as we're making some of those decisions. I don't think we're going to make a decision in complete isolation. From other schools and certainly not from the schools in our our district around. Going from hybrid to remote. I think it's going to be a clear. And our governor and our commissioner seem to be, and our state seem to be on the conservative side of all of this. Just by looking at the data.
Ford?
My answer is, is I'm ready to vote now. I think it's very clear. There's a plan that's been worked on by numerous. Groups over the summer. It's a plan that's been communicated well to the Minuteman community. It's a plan that's basically been accepted by the Minuteman community, at least hearing. But more importantly, school's about to open. And I think parents and and teachers, more than anyone else, need to know what they're, what they're, what the plan is. And I think we have a plan. We know that the plan is fluid. We know that it could change overnight, depending on. The testing, depending on what the facts tell us on the ground. But. We got to go with this now. Again, in another month, it may change. We can't sit and wait for another week, another month. To see if it does change. I would implore the school committee to let's move ahead, let's support the administration, let's support the faculty, let's support. Families and let's support the students, so they really have all something to look forward to and move forward on.
Jennifer?
So I would assume, though, if some sort of directive or or recommendation comes out of the commissioner's office that somehow part of our plan. Doesn't coincide with. We could adjust it, right? I mean, it's not. We aren't. If we vote on this tonight, we aren't like committing to it regardless of what what else happens, right? Okay.
No.
I mean, this is, everything's going to change. We just don't know. I mean, it's so. What's going to happen next week is nobody knows, so.
Two days in a row that something hasn't impacted our. Understanding about how to implement the hybrid model.
Yeah, and I think giving teachers and the parents something at least to go on is important, because they do, you know, they have to make a decision soon.
Exactly, yeah.
Dave?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's important that we we vote and again, show some type of consensus of support for. The administration, showing that we have a plan. The plan, again, has the ability to to morph and change, but we've committed to a sound. Plan, I think, in in, you know, just in reflection of our discussion tonight. You know, we're all very sensitive of making sure that we, we, we make the right decision, but um. Again, as everybody's mentioned. New data is coming up and 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 new guidance is being being put forth. But I think we need to show our our district that we, as a. that we as a school committee are on board and we, we support the direction that this plan has. You know, could it improve? Could, I, I, I believe that there's opportunities and, and we'll have that opportunity to make those adjustments and tweaks. But, but honestly, I think we should vote in and, and make a recommendation to either support this plan or ask that we, we, if it doesn't pass that those specific elements that need to improve in order for people to feel comfortable are vetted. So that the administration has a plan to present. But I'm comfortable with what's presented and, and I believe the intention is not to, to be rigid on this plan. But we will be heading in this direction with new information as it becomes available.
I have a question to follow up on one of Dave's earlier questions regarding parents who choose remote. And forgive me if you already had answered this, but if, how much flexibility is there for families to change their minds? So, you know, they may feel comfortable now, but then they may decide in October, oops, you know, I really don't feel comfortable anymore. It's not that their child is displaying any symptoms, but they don't feel comfortable, or maybe it goes the other way. Is there flexibility for that?
Yeah, it's up to the parents.
Okay.
You know, we want to understand why and make sure they're making that decision with all the correct information. You know, some may start remotely and want to start right away. And we'll have to assess how soon that kid could start. You know, based upon questions we ask about symptoms and, and exposure and that sort of thing. It goes, it kind of goes both ways.
Yeah, but even if, if it's not because the child has any symptoms, but it was the, the choice of the family, they still can have that flexibility to change their mind, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Other questions? Alice?
Sorry, sorry to be a pain. I'm just wondering if we shouldn't add to the vote that we're subject to revision as additional information is made available. Does that's not, the vote doesn't say that. So, I mean, we've all said, talked a lot about how things could be different. But it doesn't say that on the vote and it's all about the vote.
Some schools have added that trailer, I guess, what do you call?
Yeah.
Caveat or what do you call it?
Claws?
Addendum?
Diane has something, Pam?
Okay.
Diane is the president of the Faculty Association?
Okay, great. Diane, do you want to make a comment or ask a question?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, just make a few points that might help with whatever decision you decide to go with. But Ed and I have been meeting, or either in person or over the phone, probably weekly since this all started back in March. So we've definitely had a lot of communication. Recently, just the past few days, the Faculty Association, we, in addition to the administration survey, we completed our own survey where we had two-thirds of our members respond. And I will say it was split right down the middle as far as the question was, do you feel comfortable or do you support Minuteman's reopening plan? And it was definitely split. So Ed and I spoke and we we had, I had an association meeting yesterday and then we had a town hall meeting with, with Ed yesterday, last night. So I think at that point, a lot of additional questions were answered. The primary, like Ed has already mentioned, the primary issues are certainly around safety. Childcare issues were a major issue. And really equity between, you know, our vocational staff and our academic teachers. I think a lot of that was answered in yesterday's meeting. But one thing I will also reiterate is that our rep from the Mass Teachers Association has also reviewed Minuteman's reopening plan. And they support this newest version. The one we tweaked literally Thursday afternoon before the last school committee meeting where we made significant change, in my opinion, for much, much better results as far as what we're offering academically as well as really keeping in mind the safety of our staff because I know we're, we're looking at the kids, but I think we also really need to make sure that the safety of our, our teachers are at the forefront because we need everybody safe and healthy in order to actually, you know, do what we do best with the kids. So the MTA did support Minuteman's plan. And specifically because of the new building and specifically because the phased-in approach we're taking with, with just one grade at a time. I, I just wanted on record that our teachers, we do have a handful of teachers that are definitely still concerned. I know that they are meeting with Ed, a number of them are meeting with Ed individually to go over ADA accommodations. So he's been open to hearing anything that people have concerns about and trying to see what Minuteman can offer. You know, from, from safety concerns down to childcare issues. So I, I think with what Ford said this evening too, as far as the plan being fluid, I, I think that's, that has to be the case. You know, I think that's obvious what we're, we're all hoping for. In that, you know, the teachers are being heard. The MTA has had, you know, taken a look at what we're proposing and I, I think it's probably the best of what we can do right with all the other factors we're all dealing with. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Diane. You know, that was very helpful. I saw Michael's hand up. Michael, were you responding to Alice's suggestion or did you? Because I want to make sure we don't forget that.
No, no, I would only say with respect to our colleagues, I wish to move the question.
Okay. Okay, can Jeff help me here? So we had a suggestion for an amendment to the motion as well as
Question is non-debatable and requires two-thirds to move forward.
Okay. Then let's move to roll call on.
Make a clarification is to move forward on moving the question, not on approving.
Yes.
Moving the question, correct, not on the motion on the table.
Okay, so this roll call is on moving the question, just to be clear. And again, we'll do roll call alphabetically by town. I see a question.
So no, I just want to make it clear, if we move, if we do this and approve it, then we can't add Alice's suggestion.
Moving the question means we go to the, directly to the main motion.
Okay. So again, Jeff, you said it's non-debatable?
Debatable requires a two-thirds majority.
I, I will retract that motion if someone wishes to move an amendment to the main motion pursuant to, to the remarks that Alice previously made.
Okay.
I will do that. I would, I think something that says, an amendment to this that says understanding the fluid nature of COVID, this plan may be adjusted. Or something along, Ed, do you have an idea, something simple?
Well, the ones I've seen have just said, we approve the plan as presented, understanding that it may need adjustments.
Okay, I will move that we make that adjustment.
Second. Okay, now, can this be considered? Do we need a, I'm sorry, everyone.
Amendment.
You have to vote on the amendment.
We have to vote separate. Thank you all, voted separately on the amendment. I just want to make sure it couldn't just be a friendly addition. So we're voting on the amendment that was just described. So moving to roll call vote on that amendment. Again, alphabetically by town, Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Toluca Stowe, yes, that gives the superintendent the ability to change stuff too.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
I'm not changing nothing without you guys.
Now moving on to any further discussion on the amendment, on the motion as amended? And let's move to roll call vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Toluca Stowe, yes. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thanks. Just aligned with that vote would be an approval of the school calendar that I can share with you. I also sent out a I think I believe, can you see the school calendar?
Nope.
It is on the screen.
Is it small?
Yes. Small and it's covered with COVID colors.
Let's see here. So it reflects what the department has asked for, 170 student day. Still providing
That's better.
935 hours. Well, you know, we have a start date here for new teachers and all teachers beginning on August 31st. I reviewed this with Diane and, and my administration. And you can see, we have the 10 days of mandated training at the front of the school year with students. Seniors actually starting on September 16th. Then juniors only on the 17th, sophomores only on the 18th, and then the freshman week would start the 21st. I'll also point up there that we have freshman orientation on September 9th and September 10th. So that we can set them up with their technology, get them oriented and work with them in a smaller group. So what we have to do, and then the rest of the year is as usual. And so that's what I'm asking you to approve. And then there'll be some other days in there that we change, but you don't vote on those like you know, when we have whatever we're going to have for a virtual open house or freshman night. We have parent-teacher conferences, we're in there that reflects some of the changes in the contract with the teachers have agreed to an additional hour in parent-teacher conferences, which was, we were really grateful for. And Julie has sent out the PDF earlier.
I'll move, we accept the calendar.
Any discussion? Jennifer?
Oh, so what I noticed is around the vacations in February and April. If you go down, the vacation week should have been a senior week in February, but it comes back, it comes back as being sophomore, you know, sophomores or junior, whatever, juniors or sophomores or somebody, no juniors. And then again, in April, the same thing happens. Are they balanced? Is that what happens? Is that because?
We have to balance them.
So this, this does balance them. I did try to number them up and see if.
We may have to make some adjustments on that, but you know, the school committee calendar, usually it's the beginning of the year, the end of the year, professional development days and vacations.
Right. I just wanted to make sure there was, somebody wasn't losing a week. At the expense of somebody else. Okay, I'm good then.
Julie?
This is just a semantics question. Because of the color codes, do you have a term that you and the faculty like to use, you know?
Formats.
I'm sorry?
Format. The codes, the colors refer to formats.
Okay.
Like format two in a normal year would be freshmen and juniors are in shop together.
Okay.
Format one would mean sophomores and seniors are in shop together.
Okay, thank you. That answers it.
Other questions or comments? Okay, let's move to a roll call vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Acton, oh, excuse me, Concord, yes, sorry.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Toluca Stowe, yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all. We'll be in touch.
Yeah, and you know, and I, I want to thank again the administration and the faculty for all your work together on this and for all the collaboration. And I want to thank the school committee for kind of your, your thoughtful consideration. And Steve will take you back to Acton anytime.
I've said it too many times in 10 years.
Okay. Okay, moving on to the athletic fields.
This is Ford Spalding. Before I start on the athletic fields, let me give you a quick update on the building process, if I may. The punch list should all be done by August 21. What's left to do is some door replacements. The contamination issues will all be finalized and completed by the 13th, two days from now. The guardrail and loop roll will be in the same day. There is a cable tray that needs to be installed in the theater and that will be done by the 18th. Final commissioning will be done by the end of the month. We expect the certificate of occupancy next week from Lincoln. So by the time we meet next, the building project portion of what we're doing should be done. However, the building committee, just want you to know, remains in place until the MSBA signs off, which could be what, a year or so? From now, so that committee does not go away. The building committee also remain intact during the athletic complex phase. So you're not going to lose the building committee report unless you want to. Let me move now to the athletic complex. And before I go to the PowerPoint, let me just go over a few things. There are going to be a few changes, few minor changes to the PowerPoint, what you saw before, it has been shown to the building committee incidentally. But those minor changes are really going to be in anticipation of perhaps of the increased costs of contamination issues. At our team post-construction meeting today, it has been determined that we should be at $3.8 million being left over for the athletic field. We'll have a firm number with, hopefully within a week or two. So we think we're in a very good place. Just so you recall, it is planned that on October 5th, we will be asking the school building committee and the school committee to vote on the final expenditure for construction and approve, and we will have a general contractor appointed then also. This is all after bids have been received and we made a recommendation to you all. That you all, we all wanted another bite of the apple, which you're going to get anyway. So that is anticipated, it'll be October 5. If I can go, here we go to the presentation. Let me, I'm going to briefly go through it. It was sent to you earlier.
Can you see it?
Next slide, can everybody see it?
Yes.
This is the project scope of what we wanted to do, and this is the base design that we're looking at right now. Each field is going to meet the National Federation of State High School Association requirements. It'll be provide a safe facility for athletes, spectators and visitors. Maximize revenue potential through rentals and Maximize revenue potential through rentals and minimize impact to the approved site plan, and we're looking at a $5.9 million cost. The base bid scope is going to be a multi-sport synthetic turf stadium field, that equipment, asphalt walking track, spectator fencing. That's a little new that I think you saw last, but that's an asphalt track that we're, I think, is be important to add in for, mainly for walking, for community of all students. Synthetic turf softball, multi-use field with dugouts, bullpens, and batting cage, and synthetic turf baseball. Field with multi-use field dugouts, bullpens, and batting cage. Emergency vehicle access and visitor vehicle drop-in, which is going to be required anyway, so we're going to do it. Accessible walkways, safety netting, and spectator viewing areas, maintenance equipment, and scoreboards and utilities. That's our base bid scope right now. We've then moved to some alternates. We're going to have, add alternates in the project, which we can build on depending on where we are when the bids come in. So, we know that we're not going to exceed 13 million, and did I say that right? I think.
5.9 million or 5. Yeah.
So, the first alternate we have is a stadium field lighting. Next slide. Second alternate is softball multi-use field lighting. Next slide. Is the third alternate is baseball multi-use field lighting, alternate four. Other competitive running track and track events that is a surface that's put down on the concrete base. Alternate five, it is the non-fixed track equipment would be in there, alternate six. Six is a perimeter fence going around the whole area. There is fencing around each individual field, but this is a perimeter field going around the area, so that's the alternate which we'll build on. As you know, we now know that we hopefully will have $3.8 million, which is going to be, mean that the cost of the remediation for the contamination was less than we anticipated, which is good news. So, that's, that's pretty much it, in a nutshell, where we're going with our field. That completes the presentation.
Thank you, Ford, and just to be clear, you're not looking for action tonight? This is for information, right?
Just for information, and also bring you up to date. It's sort of like the plan that we just previously voted on. It changes as time is going on. We're going to have a final number, hopefully in a week, maybe a little more than 10 days. Maybe we'll have a little more, maybe we'll have a little less left over, but that's all good news with the building project coming to conclusion. It's been, what, a decade of work, Ed, just to get where we are now, so.
11 years, 10 months.
There you go.
Two weeks.
Well, I've only been here a decade, I think.
I did see one question from Michael.
Thank you, Pam. Ford, this is all great news. When we look at this again, can we have some, at least preliminary indications from possible tenants as to their interest and start to generate something on the revenue side?
I think, Michael, before you join the school committee meeting, and we can dig up that, we did talk to groups in Lexington and Arlington primarily, who have indicated interest in it. Nobody said yes, because we don't have a facility. But the answer is, is we do have groups in both Lexington and Arlington who specifically have expressed interest. So, we'll try to get that slide over to you.
Sure. If someone could check back with those same people, so much has changed in the last six months, I'd really like to know that these folks are still interested.
Yeah, the other thing is, is because of what we're going through with COVID and what are we going to have for athletics, it's really going to be hard. I agree with the assessment that in another year, a year from now, we'll probably know what direction we're going to be going in with actual participation in sports, and then the rentals will be up there. But I do know from personal experience with grandchildren, there's been a great deal of interest and activity on those field rentals for the various club sports.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Jeff?
So, Ford, as we have developed our various plans for these fields, our understanding of the cost changed several times, sometimes in our advantage, sometimes not in our advantage. Do you have any information now that led you to believe that we really do have a pretty good indication that the fact that the numbers we think that we have are going to be in the ballpark of what our bids are going to come in on?
The answer is our architects, Castle Booze, and Luke in particular, who, that's his primary field for them, feels comfortable that will be in good shape, and we have to look at what are the costs of construction going forward. He has a pretty good feel of that. This isn't his only project that he's working on. When we originally, Ed and I talked to them, we asked them to be very conservative with their approach. We'll find out how very conservative it is when the bids come in. We won't know anything until bids come in. But, yeah, I'm optimistic.
Okay, well, let's, fingers crossed. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much, Ford.
Thank you, everybody.
Oh, again, you know, just, you know, but it's pretty, it actually is pretty extraordinary to see, you know, this project, you know, actually coming to that end. So, thank you for you and everyone else for all your work in that. Let's move on to our finance report.
Sorry, I had to unmute, took a minute. Good evening, and our first agenda item A is the approval of fiscal year 21 transfers. This is a request for the school committee to consider voting to authorize the recommended line item budget transfers in the fiscal year 21 budget. Under school committee policy, these transfers would require school committee approval. As part of our year-end strategy, I identified $307,000 of savings that would be, or should be used to purchase loose AV equipment for our state-of-the-art theater, saving us considerable markup. And the remainder is a contingency to offset potential fiscal year 21 reductions in state aid or other COVID-related expenses, not covered by grants. So, this evening, I'm requesting a vote to approve the fiscal year 21 transfers as presented.
Don't move.
Any discussion? Jennifer.
So, I just have a quick question about the $180,000 was, that's a sizable amount of money. What was that for? I mean, everything else was kind of smaller budgets.
Yeah. I'd have to look that up. Let me see if I can find it. I know we sent out a second one. Oh, that was technology. That was a significant amount of technology that had to be that we moved because we expended that. We purchased the one-to-ones in advance. That's what that was. I'm sorry. Does that make sense?
Other comments, questions? Jennifer, I saw you unmuted yourself. All set. Okay. Anything else?
What does one-to-one mean? I'm sorry for asking a question which I'm sure everyone else knows.
So, actually, our technology director was very astute in recommending that we purchase our one-to-one computers very early on, and so that we could, we use that surplus money to purchase those. And we're very fortunate, because a lot of districts are now scrambling to get their computers for their one-to-one initiatives and for their virtual learning. And we got our orders in early, so that's why we expended that money. We don't want to keep it in the budget there.
The one-to-ones are the devices that we give to the freshmen when they come in, so that they can.
It's the laptop devices.
Every student has a laptop.
One-to-one, one device, one student, one device, one-to-one.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, let's move to roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Will Do Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Toluca Stowe, yes.
Okay, thank you. Item B.
Item B, this is actually a vote to accept the truck donation from Mass Bay Community College. And we're very fortunate, our auto department has a relationship with Paul Breznik from Mass Bay Community College, who is the General Motors instructor there. Paul is also on our Minuteman Advisory Council, and he's been very supportive of our program. He's offered to redonate a 2019 General Motors pickup truck, and our committee has recommended the acceptance of this donation as it falls within the five-year-old criteria for vehicles. The attached Minuteman Gifts Grants Donation Scholarship Form that I provided has been approved by Dr. McQuillan, and this is a welcome addition to our vehicle inventory. School committee policy, DDA, requires that gifts or donations exceeding 5,000 shall be authorized by a separate resolution passed by the school committee at a public meeting. I'm requesting that the school committee vote to approve the donation of the vehicle as described on the donation form. This gift is actually kind of unique in that it's really considered a donation agreement, and General Motors, the General Motors donation handbook stipulates that the vehicle does not become the school's property, but General Motors technically retains ownership. But we would have the use of it as a training aid, and when we deem it no longer useful, it's expected to be destroyed or crushed at a salvage yard and photographed, as we have done with all our other past corporate vehicle donations. Since this vehicle is not technically owned by the school committee, it will never have surplus value to the school. It is an anomaly in our policy, however, out of an abundance of cost, I chose to protect the district by going through the donation process. So, I would ask tonight to vote to accept the donation of one 2019 General Motors pickup truck from Massachusetts Bay Community College and General Motors as stipulated in the GM donation handbook.
I'll move.
Second.
Excuse me, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to roll call vote. So, Pam Nurse Acton, yes. Michael.
Sorry, it was unmuting. Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Will Do Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Toluca Stowe, yes.
Okay, thank you. Item C.
Item C is a vote for the disposal of surplus computers, and again, we're going to talk about those one-to-one computers. Attached is, I provide a list of surplus computers, their four-year-old student computers in our one-to-one program that no longer have the capability to perform adequately on our network. Some work minimally, but others do not work at all. The administration would like to recycle these surplus computers since they have reached the end of their life cycle and have no value. School policy, school committee policy DN requires the school committee by a majority vote to determine whether said computers are surplus. This is a request for the school committee to vote to determine that the computers as presented on the attached list are surplus. The administration will then follow the procedures in school committee policy to dispose of these items. So, I'd ask tonight for a vote to determine that the one-to-one computers as presented are surplus.
Moved.
Okay, we got motions and seconds. Jeff?
So, of course, as a computer guy, this is all amusing to me that computers do have a lifespan. So, my question, I guess I have two questions, one of which you may not be able to answer off the bat. One question is, when we purchase these equipment, they say these one-to-one computers, is that what we anticipate being the lifespan of them, four years in general? That means the one we purchased four years ago and the one we're purchasing now, is that what we expect their lifespan to be?
In general, most one-to-one programs, it's four to five years. I think we've had significant capacity updates with having a brand-new high school. And I also think that being a vocational school, my understanding from our technology director is that some of our programs have significantly increased requirements than a traditional one-to-one computer can provide, so.
You're running, if the students are running Creative Cloud, okay? That is one of the things that requires an inordinate amount of processing power and graphics. I noticed, again, when I saw that Creative Cloud last time, that's what you need. So, could you tell me, and this is the question you may not be able to answer, the primary way in which these four-year-old computers are inadequate for the current student needs?
From my understanding from Victor is that they literally won't run on our network now, and they won't run especially those, you know, those extensive programs like Creative Cloud for DBC and some of our other software for advanced manufacturing is very complicated. So, the computers have been assessed by our technology director not to be able to run those sort of programs.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, let's move to roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Will Do Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Toluca Stowe, yes.
Okay, item D.
So, for item D, I think we have Kevin McCarthy here, I'm sorry, Kevin Mahoney, who is on the retirement board and would like to present this item.
Kevin is on, is muted, we can't hear you.
That's your sound again.
Yeah, he's not muted, but.
That's why we're, we know about this.
How about this? Does this sound better now?
Yes, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Sorry about that. I'm here before you this evening as chairman of the Minuteman Regional Retirement Board. For some of the newer members, there are 104 public retirement boards in the Commonwealth, and of those, Minuteman is among them. The smallest of them all, perhaps, but nonetheless, we still, we still manage our own retirement system. It's about a $13.5 million system. Funds are managed by the Pension Reserves Investment Trust under the state treasurer. We have about 48 active employees and 42 retirees. We forwarded this evening a copy of the, of the audit that's done every four years by the Public Employee Retirement Administration Commission, so-called PEREC. And we forwarded that to you for your information. One of the specific reasons that the board asked me to address the school committee this evening was one of the findings that was brought forward in the audit, there were two findings, and the finding that was noted, the second finding was noted was regarding compensation of stipends to retirement board members. Chapter 32 does allow provisions to pay stipends to retirement board members between $3,000 and $4,500 a year to service on the board. This, this was initially enacted in 1996, and it has since been revised over time. And about 75 of the 104 retirement systems do some level of compensation to their board members, for their board members. So, back in 96, there was, there was an action by the Minuteman School Committee that authorized the stipend be paid to one of the board members for keeping the minutes and acting as the secretary for the regional retirement board. So, over time, that person was compensated until such time as we hired a part-time retirement administrator. And then we started compensating the, the district treasurer, who sits on the board as the ex officio member, a $1,500 stipend. who sits on the board as the ex-official member, a $1,500 stipend. When we looked at the PERAC website, which keeps track of all the, the, the systems that adopted the local option, we were always under the understanding that Minuteman had adopted the local option appropriately because it was indicated on their website that we had adopted the local option. Although we went many years without, the board members without receiving our compensation. But then, over time, the requirements for the, to serve on the board changed. In 2011, there were new obligations that were brought forward, particularly as it related to professional development commitments, the need for 18 hours for three terms and an annual financial disclosure that board members had to sign and submit to PERAC. For some of these reasons and a need to be able to attract candidates, we found that we were having difficulty filling the seats of the board. One position that's voted by the active employees, another seat that's voted by the retirees. I mentioned the district treasurer serves as one. I, as chairman, were, was appointed by the school committee. My term ends in November. And then the other four members appoint the fifth member. But we were having difficulty having employees and retirees serve because of, because of the time commitment and some of the professional development requirements. So back in March or so, March of 2018, the retirement board voted to receive a $3,000 stipend per year. I did report that to the superintendent at the time to disclose that. And we've been receiving that since, however, in this audit, because of the vote that was taken originally only authorizing one individual, one board member versus the full board, the corrective action by, as required by PERAC in the audit was to seek to ask the school committee to vote to reaffirm the vote that was taken in order to authorize the stipend to board members. There's a memo from me in your packet as well as some additional information. I'd be happy to answer any questions on this.
Okay, um, do we have a motion and then we can move on to?
I will move that we authorize the $3,000 per board member for the retirement board.
Second.
If, if I could point out that the formal vote would be noted on page 13. See if I read it to you?
No, I got it.
Yep.
I got it. Hold on.
At the bottom of my...
Yep. Okay, so the Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical School District School Committee confirms its 1996 acceptance of the provisions of Mass General Law, Section 32, Subsection 26, 26. An approved payment of the stipend of $3,000 per that provision to all Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical District Retirement Board members.
Second.
Okay, let's move to questions and discussion. Any questions? Yes, Michael?
Kevin, thank you for the report. I was curious to find out, in the audit, it looks like a lot of the tables of liabilities, investment performances and such end December 31 of 2017. Is it typical for such an audit to be more than two years behind present?
Yeah, if, for the, for the PERAC audit, they do have a four-year cycle. And I do know that due to staffing changes, that they've been lagging in trying to keep up. However, I would like to point out that when our district auditors come in annually, Melanson and he, they will also look at the, at the retirement system in order to make sure that we're fully reporting properly our financial statements, and we update our, our unfunded library for our actuary every two years as required.
Thank you. And that brings up the only other question that I have. I believe our unfunded liability was, seemed to, seemed to be small. Was it about 14%? If I read that correctly? And how does, how does that compare with other small retirement accounts or small retirement administrations?
Yeah, funded ratio right now at this point is 88.3%. So we're just under 12%. We rank in the top, we rank in the top three in the Commonwealth. Again, we're among the smallest, but we're the boat, one of the better funded in the state.
That, that is much, much to the commendation of the board. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Alice?
Somewhere in the back of my mind, I recall we were, used to be 100%, I think.
I think over time, I'm not sure we're quite 100%, but over time, we were, we were a little bit higher. Again, this, this takes into consideration over the last number of years, what some of the events have been, particularly as it relates to 2008. This doesn't talk about what's, what's going on in the most current fiscal year. But I think we have not lost much ground relative to some of the other systems in the Commonwealth.
I have one quick question. Is there a point where it has to be fully funded? Is this a Gatsby thing that at some point you have to show it's fully funded?
Well, yeah, it's, we're, what happens is that PERAC will, will send Minuteman Retirement Board a funding schedule, and that funding schedule is intended to fully fund them by the year 2040. And the retirement system will send the administration what the funding schedule is. And each year, the district appropriates a line item, and that's the district share of the, of the assessment. The remaining funding sources are employee deductions as well as interest income. And all of that is factored in to try and meet the, meet the fully funded target of the year 2040.
And as Kevin pointed out, originally, I think we were all supposed to be fully funded, I think in 2030. But then when there were some fiscal hard times, 2008, 2009, that kind of got kicked down the road to 2040. So, you know, so a lot, a lot of communities or a lot of systems are not, you know, close to fully funded as our system is right here.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, let's move to roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman, Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor, Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue, Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding, Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Lucastro, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin.
Anything else on the finance report? Nope. Okay, let's move on to subcommittee reports. We have one subcommittee report from the policy subcommittee. Alice?
Howdy, just drying up my copy. Hang on a second. So this policy came up for second reading when I wasn't here. I, my, got a chance to see my son and his wife for the first time in seven months. And I understood there was a question about the title of the policy and the code. So in your packet and on the copy that's in your packet, also in the agenda, you'll see that it's, it's called Advisory Subcommittee and Task Force Members, and the policy code is BDEX. The reason for the X is because the subcommittee policies are the BDE policies, and I didn't think we would ever get to X. This is not a standard subcommittee and task force members policy. This is something we developed. So because we are a large regional district with a small school committee, we thought there might be need eventually for some expertise to help us. And this was a way to enable us to do that. That's the purpose for the policy. And the X is just a very late letter in the alphabet that seemed like we would never get to it for other subcommittee reasons. So that's why those letters are there. So I would take a motion to approve the advisory subcommittee and task force member policy, BDEX, for second reading as presented.
Moved.
Second.
And then we can discuss it.
Any questions or comments? If not, we'll move to roll call vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman, Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor, Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue, Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding, Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Lucastro, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Moving on to secretary's report. Alice, back to you.
So I wasn't at your last meeting, but I did watch the entire video. And I was number eight of people who watched the YouTube video. It's a popular one. Anyway, those are the minutes. I worked on with Julia. Julia did a lot of work. And we take a motion to approve the minutes.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, any, any questions about the minutes? Okay, move to roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman, Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor, Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue, Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding, Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Lucastro, yes, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Shall we, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Wait, before we do, there are two questions that never got answered on the chat. Do we want to address them?
We said we were not going to.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I missed that. I apologize. The clock in my kitchen was behind. Okay. Sorry.
That's okay.
We will go back and review the chat.
I know who they are.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman, Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor, Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue, Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding, Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Lucastro, yes.
Thank you, everyone. Next meeting is September 8. So see you all then.
Thank you.
Everybody stay safe.